Hello and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Regular Meeting of Tuesday, February 12th, 2019. My name is Michael Wentz and with us today is Caleb Wysocki, our sign language interpreter. The following is a list of legislation to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess presents Bill 1370, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter 210 of the City Code, the Mayor and the Director of Department of Public Safety to accept a donation from Pittsburgh Three Rivers Marathon of $17,500 to be deposited into the Public Safety Support Trust Fund. Councilwoman Deborah Gross presents Bill 1371, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure under Title 11 of the Code, that certain structure known as the Carrick Municipal Hall located at 1806 Brownsville Road in the 29th Ward, City of Pittsburgh. Councilman Corey O'Connor presents Bill 1372, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sale of Land by Between the URA of Pittsburgh and Module Design or an Entity to be Formed for the Sale of Block 83A, Lot 266, in the 11th Ward of City of Pittsburgh. Bill 1373, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sale of Land by and between the URA of Pittsburgh and Module Design and Bloomfield-Garfield Corporation or an Entity to be Formed for the Sale of Block 83A, Lot 264, in the 11th Ward of City of Pittsburgh. Bill 1374, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sale of Land by and between the URA of Pittsburgh and Action Housing or a Related Entity for the Sale of Block 25D, Lots 104, 106, 107, and 108, in the 6th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh. Bill 1375, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sale of Land by and between the URA of Pittsburgh and CWPD for the Sale of Blocks 70E, Lots 300 and 325, and Block 107H, Lot 100, in the 28th Ward, City of Pittsburgh. Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith presents Bill 1376, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Works to Execute Relevant Agreements to Receive Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection to Provide Funding to Conduct a Recycling Education Program and Purchase Blue Recycling Bins and Further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $350,000 for this Stated Purpose. Bill 1377, Resolution Amending Resolution 714 of 2018 for the Mayor, the Acting Director of the Office of Management and Budget, and the Director of Department of Public Works to Enter into an Agreement with Quadica for Professional Services relating to Fleet Telematics and Snow Route Optimization at a Cost Not to Exceed $1,731,832 over a Three-Year Period with Two One-Year Optional Renewals. Councilman Erica Strausberger presents Bill 1378, Resolution Amending Resolution 26 of 2018, A Resolution Authorizing the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter into a Contract or Contracts with QSEN Technologies for the Purpose of Constituent Relationship Management, Software Services Necessary for the Operations of the City's 311 Response Line for a Period of Five Years, Total Cost Not to Exceed $162,600 by Extending the Term for One Additional Year and by Increasing the Authorized Amount by $53,595.30 for a Bill 1379, Resolution Providing for the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of KMDDI in the Amount of $17,902.80 over the Allowable RFQ Limit for Changes to the Design and Equipment to the City Stat Room as Provided to the Department of Innovation and Performance and the Department of Public Works. Councilman Bruce A. Kraus presents Bill 1380, Communication from Moore Kennedy, Director of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections Submitting Both PLIs Revised Licensing Rules and Regulations and PLIs Rental Registration Rules and Regulations. Bill 1381, Resolution Reappointing Brenda Smith as a Member of the Board of Directors of the Allegheny County Sanitary Authority for a Term to Expire on December 31st, 2020. Bill 1382, Resolution Appointing Dr. Shanna Thorpe Gilman as a Member of the Board of Directors of the Allegheny County Sanitary Authority for a Term to Expire on March 26th, 2020. This Seat was Previously Filled by Greg Jones. Bill 1383, Resolution Informing City Council of the Appointment of Lindsay Powell as a Member to the URA for a Term to Expire December 2nd, 2023. Unfinished Business, Bill 1333, Resolution Appointing Santiago Garcis as a Director of Department of Innovation and Performance. Bill 1334, Resolution Appointing Alex Matthews to Serve as a Member of Ethics Hearing Board for a Term to Expire January 31st, 2022. Bill 1335, Resolution Appointing Cheryl Ganey as a Member of the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh with a Term to Expire December 31st, 2024. Bill 1336, Resolution Appointing Alexander B. LaRocco as a Member of the Housing Authority of City of Pittsburgh with a Term to Expire December 31st, 2024. This concludes the reading for today, Tuesday, February 12th, 2019. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Regular Meeting of Pittsburgh City Council for today, Tuesday, February 22nd, I'm sorry, forgive me, February 12th, 2019. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross, Mrs. Harris, Mr. Lavelle, Mr. O'Connor, Mrs. Kell Smith, Ms. Strausberger, Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Five Members Present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? And this morning, we ask that you would remain standing for a moment of silence. There was a great loss to all of us, not just as an employee to the City of Pittsburgh here, but to friends and to the friendships that we all shared with Richard Merritzer. He was with our Planning Department for I don't know how many years, I've kind of lost count, and Richard was one of the kindest and one of the most sincere and beloved employees I think we've ever had in the city, and we lost Richard on Friday, I believe on Friday he passed, and after a long battle with cancer, and it's just a great loss to all of us, not just to the city, but to everyone who knew and loved Richard, and so if you would please keep him in your thoughts and prayers during our moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you all, you may be seated. Our next order of business is Proclamations, and we have one to be presented this morning, so welcome, Councilman Lavelle.
If Ms. Margaret Campbell Watson would please come forward, along with Brenda Tate.
Should we bring her a chair, Councilman?
Yeah, that'd probably be good.
Chris, could we have a chair, please?
Yes.
Would you like a chair, are you sure?
You want a chair?
Will they happily bring you one?
You want a chair or can you stand?
How long?
Two or three minutes.
Two or three, about a minute.
Okay, that's okay, I can say that.
So, I'll get right into it then. Whereas Margaret Campbell Watson epitomizes the legacy of the descendants of freed slaves who resettled in Pittsburgh, she was born in Birmingham, Alabama, on July 6th, 1920, and moved to the Hill District with her sister Bernice and brother-in-law James Robinson in 1940. Whereas Margaret has lived a life of hard and passionate work, she scrubbed floors with her sister in order to purchase the home she currently lives in, waited tables at Teddy Horn's Restaurant in the Lower Hill District, and worked at West Penn Hospital for 28 years. Whereas Margaret has been a devoted and compassionate resident of the Hill District, caring for seniors in her neighborhood, and serving as a usher at the Nazareth Baptist Church for over 50 years. Whereas Margaret married Johnny Watson in 1941 and had three children, Barbara Wooster, Joyce Fowler, and the late Richard Watson. Whereas Margaret and her family will be honored guests at a performance of the, help me say this?
Mendelshon.
Mendelshon Choir titled "Let My People Go" at Ebenezer Baptist Church on Friday, February 15th, 2019, at 7:30 PM. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare February 12th, 2019 to be Margaret Campbell Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Here, here, may I have a motion in a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Margaret.
Do you have any remarks? Any remarks?
Well, I'm just happy to be here.
That's about it.
Thank you, Brenda.
No, I'm just happy to be here.
That's great.
Thanks, Brenda, thanks, Margaret.
Thank you.
We have, let's wait. We have two to be read into the record, we'll do your will of counsel after the read, okay, Councilman? Madam Clerk, may we then have Mr. O'Connor's first and then Mr. Merritzer's second, please?
Councilman O'Connor presents. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Thursday, February 7th, 2019 to be Mike Toth Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Oh, I'm sorry, may I have a motion in a second, please?
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes.
Councilman, is this?
It's from all members, thank you.
All Members Presents. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby celebrate the life and legacy of Richard Merritzer, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby thank Richard for his service and dedication to the residents of Pittsburgh and for his contributions toward building a more inclusive city.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman, I think you wish to make remarks?
I mean, he was obviously a dedicated public servant, he was with the city for 35 years, which is incredible, and he's inspired many people, not only because of his work on ADA accessibility issues, but also the internship program that he started, the first ever internship program in city planning, which then allowed for others to use, to emulate him and his model and be as inclusive as possible with interns that they were hiring. He was someone I went to for advice in that regard when I was establishing my internship program, so he will be sorely missed, not just for his work here, but as you said, because of the humble and gracious and grateful person that he was.
Yeah, thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman, we're honoring Mr. Merritzer, would you like to make remarks?
Yes. I've known Richard for probably since the 80s, and got to know him as a person, a committee man, and neighborhood person, and working in the city. He has to be one of the best employees the city has ever had. He has worked so hard, and he knew so much, and I've missed him since he's been in the hospital. He's a wonderful man, and my sympathies go out to his partner and family, and not only am I going to miss him, this whole city's going to miss him. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilwoman. Just repeat what I said earlier, truly one of the kindest, most gentle, authentic human beings I've ever had the honor to have in my life, and I'll miss him terribly, and I wish him Godspeed. With that, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second, and all in favor, aye.
Aye.
The motion passes, thank you all. Councilman O'Connor, you have a will of counsel, I believe?
I do. I know everybody's on here as a sponsor, and Councilwoman Harris is a co-sponsor.
Yes, thanks, Councilman.
Thank you.
Just the end, it's fine.
Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh makes known its support for Senator Jay Costa's legislative efforts to force UPMC and Highmark to put an end to their years-long dispute that has left this region's residents caught in the middle, and be it further resolved that the Council hereby calls for a swift, bicameral adoption of these bills upon their introduction to both chambers of the Pennsylvania General Assembly.
Councilman?
Just briefly, I met with Senator Costa last week to talk about his bills, I think he's introduced these a couple times, I don't know if we've had wills in the past, but you know, now that the Attorney General has filed lawsuits against UPMC, I think now the momentum hopefully will be in the favor of our residents that aren't sure what doctors they're going to be seeing in the next couple months, so this is a really big issue, but on behalf of the Senator, he wanted to thank all council members for supporting this.
Thanks, Councilman. Councilwoman Harris?
Yes, I'm 100% behind this, and Jay Costa for doing this. The City of Pittsburgh had a lawsuit against UPMC, but took it down, what, 2013 or 2014 by this administration. It was a lawsuit because of some of the same things, they just don't act like a nonprofit. It's a shame. I mean, they do have the doctors and people that work for them, we've been out there in picket lines for some of their employees that are paid peanuts, and then they show all the millions of dollars that they have at the end of the year. That is not how a nonprofit works, any nonprofit works, and you know, it's time, we should be asking this mayor to put the lawsuit back in, because we should be getting taxes. I just don't know. To do this to people, especially elderly people or children, maybe sick or dying people where they have doctors in two different hospitals, that's no nonprofit to me, and it's nobody that should be in the medical field if they care. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Without further discussion, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions, will of counsel passes, thank you, Councilman. Our next order of business then will be public comment. Anyone wishing to speak before City Council this morning, of course, has three minutes in which to do so. I would like to take this opportunity to remind everyone that the rules of council clearly state that comment is limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are at this time, or could at another time come before this council, we won't permit profanity, and we will maintain order at all times. We ask that you would please begin by giving your name and the neighborhood in which you reside for our public record, the green light will indicate the start of your three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you will have one minute to summarize your thoughts. When the red light comes on, then your time has expired. Let the record reflect that we've been joined by Councilwoman Gross and Councilwoman Kell Smith, and may we have our first speaker, please?
My name's Corey Buckner, and I'm a resident of Garfield. I first would like to take the time to thank Reverend Ricky Burgess for taking the time to address the need for our residents to have a living wage. During a time of growth in tech, ed, and med, we must ensure that our hard-working, tax-paying citizens have the ability to provide for their families. Service workers across Pittsburgh strengthen all 90 neighborhoods, and they also contribute to that growth. I want to thank everyone on council for your consideration. We must ensure that tax-paying, hard-working people who work in buildings that receive public subsidies also have the opportunity to be included in the Pittsburgh prevailing wage ordinance. Thank you.
Thanks, Corey, thanks for being here. Good morning, welcome.
Hello, my name is Anna Tang, and I live in the Friendship Neighborhood. I am also here as a community organizer for Bike Pittsburgh, and speaking on their behalf, Bike Pittsburgh is an advocacy organization of over 3,000 members that is working to make our streets and communities safe and accessible for everyone to bike and walk. I am here today in support of the legislation for the Complete Street Design Guidelines and Network Plan, a Pedestrian Safety Action Plan, a Bicycle Plan, a Strategic Vision Plan, and a Two-Year Action Agenda. It has been shown that cities that have adopted these types of policies and plans design streets that put people and safety first, not having plans like these in place make it difficult to implement the necessary improvements in an age of increasing danger on our roadways, especially for pedestrians. Here in the City of Pittsburgh, a quarter of all traffic fatalities and crashes are pedestrian-related. Just in the past few weeks, there have been two reported deaths and five reported crashes between drivers and pedestrians. Additionally, this legislation will help to reach the mayor's 2030 Climate Action Plan goals and make Pittsburgh a place that is safe, vibrant, and healthy for all of its residents. As a constituent and advocate for better biking and walking, I support and hope that you will all support this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there we have our next speaker. Good morning, Ms. Brown.
Good morning, my name is Yvonne Brown. First, I wanted to say that I was walking down the street, and here comes a car, and it says self-driving, I look through the window, you cannot see through the windows. Okay, so I'm looking, my eyesight is bad, but I'm looking, and there's a woman that works in this building over there, and so I stopped her, I say, you know you can't see in them self-driving? How's the police? She said, look at the truck over there. She said, you can't see in it. The reason why I'm standing there, because I got a nephew's dead, he had a car with dark lights, they arrested him, he also had pills, but he had broken his leg, they found out that it was his pills, so he let go. Mario had a gun, Mario said, the police are going to, they're going to, they're after me, so I'm not going to carry me, that's what he told my daughter, I'm not going to carry my gun, and he didn't carry his gun, and when he came up to Norview, he was shot down, he didn't have his gun, he shot down, my sister seen him shot down, she seen him, and they just shot, shot, shot. He turned the corner, his leg was broken, he hit me, he fell out, came and shot over, and the woman was home, get up and run, get up and run. My sister goes up in the building, she said, who is that boy's mother? Then they call and said, Beverly, that's Mario, your nephew. Now the reason why I'm upset is this, he went to jail for the dark lights, dark windows, and you got windows that we can't see who's driving, if they are driving, come on, why is it so different in the black neighborhood than you can bring cars like that down here? Number two, I want to say to Kenny K.A. and Mangino, I've talked about him, because he talks very negative about us black people, but he had an excellent show, he had a show that was telling you about black people, how we were, we fought the wars, a lot of times we fought because the slave owner didn't. Excellent show, Mangino, but some of the information was incorrect, Beppo started 1818, not 1835. Thank you, heaven night.
Okay, Ms. Brown, thank you. May we have our next speaker, please? Good morning, Dr. Miller.
Good morning. Dr. Ronaldin Miller, Belsa, Reverend Lawrenceville, University of Oxford, University of Pittsburgh, Global Intelligence Society Candidate for President 2020. Germany, Deutschland, is a democracy and our ally, Russia. Concern of City Council and of Pittsburgh citizens is the regularity or irregularity of the presence of district representatives at council meetings. Ms. Gross, bist du eine Gesinnses Einzelwagen von der Representative for Fossil? Ms. Gross, you were absent last week on the 5th and 6th of February during public comment, during proclamations on Tuesday, and for the pre-agenda, and then the agenda public comment. Warum? Why? The public has a right to know. Were you socially inconsolable because someone died in your family? Were you physically incapacitated by disease? Were you psychologically incapacitated, diagnosed with a psychosis? Were you legally incarcerated or in court as a defendant? Were you conflicted emotionally, just didn't feel like it? We pay you $60,000 a year, which means $30 an hour. I think you should return that money.
Yes.
$60, send it to the controller. What does this mean? It means that with reference to the grounds for impeachment of any officer, and I'd like the public in District 7 and broadly to consider this, that among these criteria are neglect of duty, is this absence, not just with Ms. Gross, but others, a dereliction of duty, incompetency, not giving attention as the Chair of the Economic Development Committee to proposals, including my own, made-
Ms. Gross, you were absent last week on the 5th and 6th of February during public comment, during proclamations on Tuesday, and for the pre-agenda, and then the agenda, public comment. Warum? Why? The public has a right to know. Were you socially inconsolable because someone died in your family? Were you physically incapacitated by disease? Were you psychologically incapacitated? Diagnosed with a psychosis? Were you legally incarcerated or in court as a defendant? Were you conflicted emotionally? Just didn't feel like it? We pay you $60,000 a year, which means $30 an hour. I think you should return that money.
Yes.
$60, send it to the controller. What does this mean? It means that with reference to the grounds for impeachment of any officer, and I'd like the public in District 7 and broadly to consider this, that among these criteria are neglect of duty. Is this absence, not just with Ms. Gross, but others, a dereliction of duty? Incompetency? Not giving attention as the Chair of the Economic Development Committee to proposals, including my own, made to you last year, the year before? Some form of mental incapacity when you come here and attempt to interrupt me during public comment? Malfeasance, lack of ethical or moral capacity? Refusal to apologize even for that? A refusal publicly with other councilors to condemn the Roman Catholic hierarchy for its abuse of children?
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Thank you.
Yes.
Are there any further speakers? Is there anyone else wishing to speak before City Council this morning? And seeing none, that will close the public comment portion of the council meeting and bring us into presentation of papers. Our first committee of the morning is our Committee on Finance and Law. Our Chair is Councilman Burgess. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 1370. Resolution authorizing pursuant to Chapter 210 of the City Code, the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to accept a donation from Pittsburgh Three Rivers Marathon, Inc. of $17,500 to be deposited into the Public Safety Support Trust Fund. Bill Number 1385. Ordinance amended to Pittsburgh Code Title I Administrative Article 7 Procedures, Contracts by Amending and Supplementing Section 16138 of the City of Pittsburgh Service Worker Prevailing Wage Ordinance.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Coghill, our Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Gross, our Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1371. Resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as the Carrick Municipal Hall, located at 1806 Brownsville Road in the 29th Ward of the city.
Nice. Councilwoman Harris, our Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Lavelle, our Chair of Public Safety Services.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman O'Connor, our Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 1372. Resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by sale of land by and between the URA and Modulel Design, Inc. or an entity to be formed for the sale of Block 83A, Lot 266 in the 11th Ward of the City Council District Number 9. Bill Number 373. Resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by sale of land by and between the URA and Modulel Design, Inc. and Bloomfield Garfield Corporation or any entity to be formed for the sale of Block 83A, Lot 26264 in the 11th Ward of the City Council District 9. Bill Number 1374. Resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by sale of land by and between the URA and Action Housing, Inc. or a related entity for the sale of Block 25B, Lots 104, 106, 107, and 108 in the 6th Ward of the City Council District 7. Bill Number 1375. Resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by sale of land by and between the URA and CWPV LLC for the sale of Block 70E, Lots 300 and 325 and Block 107H, Lot 100 in the 28th Ward of the City Council District Number 2.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Kail Smith, our Chair of Public Work Services.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. My pages are out of whack here.
Councilwoman Kail Smith presents Bill Number 1376. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection to provide funding to conduct a recycling education program and purchase blue recycling bins and further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $350,000 for this stated purpose. Bill Number 1377. Resolution authorizing Resolution Number 714 for the Mayor and the Acting Director of the Office of Management and Budget and the Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement with QTIC for professional services relating to fleet telematics and snow route optimization at a cost not to exceed $1,731,832 over a three-year period with two one-year optional renewals.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Strausberger, our Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Strausberger presents Bill Number 1378. Resolution amending Resolution 26 of Resolution authorizing the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into a contract with QSEN Technologies, Inc. for the purchase of constituent relationship management software services necessary for the operation of the city's 311 response line for a period of five years. Total cost not to exceed $162,600 by extending the term for one additional year, 2019, and by increasing the authorized amount by $53,595.30 for a total of $264,918.30. Bill Number 1379. Resolution providing for the issuing of a warrant in favor of KMDDI in the amount of $17,902.80 over the allowable RFQ limit for changes to the design and equipment to the city's stat room as provided to the Department of Innovation and Performance and the Department of Public Works.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman.
Motion to waive rule aid on 1379 at the request of the departments.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Do we have discussion on the motion to waive the rules on 1379? Seeing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions. Thank you, Councilwoman. The bill will appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. The Chair has a number of papers. Madam Clerk, may I begin with 1380, the communication?
Council President Kraus presents Bill Number 1380. Communication from Maura Kennedy, Director of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections, submitting both PLIs revised licensing rules and regulations and PLIs rental registration rules and regulations.
May I have a motion to receive and file, please?
移到
Second, do we have discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, aye. Opposed abstentions. Next, Madam Clerk, may I have 1881? 1881 is a reappointment?
Bill 1381. Resolution appointing, reappointing Brenda Smith as a member of the Board of Directors of the Allegheny County Sanitary Authority for a term to expire on December 31st, 2020.
Okay, since this is a reappointment, are members comfortable with passing today? May I have a motion then, please?
移到
May I have a second? Discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, aye. Opposed abstentions. 1381 passes. Then 1382 is a new appointment?
Bill 1382. Resolution appointing Dr. Shiana Dark-Gilliam as a member of the Board of Directors of the Allegheny County Sanitary Authority for a term to expire on March 26, 2020. This seat was previously filled by Greg Jones.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What is the wish of the body on 1382? Councilwoman Harris.
Motion to interview.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to interview. Do we have discussion? We have no discussion, seeing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions. We will hold 1382. 1383 is a, is an appointment that council only needs to be informed of. Madam Clerk, remind me, is that read, receive, and file, or do we actually pass? Okay, thank you.
Bill 1383. Resolution informing City Council of the appointment of Lindsay Powell as a member of the URA for a term to expire December 2nd, 2023.
Okay, may I have a motion then to read, receive, and file?
I have a question, so this is just a new appointment?
They are, if, and Madam Clerk, I'm going to lean on you for this, but I was kind of confused about this as well, too. I would have thought that, and Councilman Lavelle may be able to help us here, too, that appointments to the URA that come before council require council approval. They do not require council approval. And the, the communication is informing council of the appointment. Would you like to offer anything, Councilman?
I'm not done with my question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to, is this a new person or is this?
Yes.
So I would say that even though we don't have a, I mean, I still have questions because I want to be honest with you. There's not one person southwest of the river on that board. And so I think that the administration, I talked to Dan Gilman, he's going to try his best to get to that goal. But I want to know how people who aren't from southwest of the river are going to represent southwest of the river on that board.
So would you like to bring Lindsay in for an interview?
So I would.
Yes, okay. So let's, let's dispose of the motion to receive and file, and then I'll entertain a motion to interview, okay? So is there further discussion on the motion to receive and file? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions. Councilwoman Kail Smith, would you like to offer up a motion to interview?
So, you know, to be honest with you, just having a meeting with her, I think, would be okay. I mean, but if other people want to have questions, that's up to you.
I, I would like to interview.
But for me, I'm going to just make sure it's clear that I'm, for me, I want to make sure it's clear that I'm going to be asking that question on every board and to make sure that there's equal representation, that we're geographically diverse in those authorities. And for the, one that is so pivotal and seeing that there is no development, very little development, very little input from the URA in the southwest of the city of Pittsburgh, to me, I'm going to make sure that, and I'm going to keep pushing for somebody southwest of the river to be appointed to that board. And every time an opportunity comes up, I thought that there was somebody a week or so ago that, that her name was?
Lisa?
Jody Hirsch. Did we approve her yet?
Yeah, well, I believe we approved her.
We don't have to approve.
No, I know, but did anybody interview or you just, they just, we just received, read, whatever?
Councilman?
No, I'm saying we did, we made the approval for.
But again, I just want to point out, they're not from the southwest of the river. So it's two new appointments, neither are from southwest of the river. And I do trust Dan Gilman because he has been very good to our side of town. And I do believe that he's sincere in trying to get somebody on there from our side of town when an opening does become available. But for me, I want to make sure that they know every time they come. So we interviewed Jody, I think I'll sit down with both Jody and Lindsay and have a conversation with them, as I did with Sam Williamson. Actually gave him a tour of our district. And he's been very helpful, even though he's not from the southwest of the river. He's been very helpful, make sure he calls when there's something, you know, that comes up in our area, or if there's something that we need to have happen in our area. So I just want to say, you know, I'm going to just make sure that we get somebody from the southwest.
Councilwoman Harris.
Motion to interview.
Okay, we have a motion to interview. May I have a second, then we'll have discussion? Second, discussion with Councilman Coghill?
No, I just wanted to back up Councilwoman Kail Smith's thoughts and thank her for, you know, looking after that area. I agree with you, you know, it just makes sense to have somebody who's familiar with those neighborhoods and the terrain over there and everything they do. And they do a lot of work on Brownsville Road, I know, which is a very important corridor. So, yeah, so thanks for pointing that out. I'd like to be in on that conversation.
I think, I think it's, the three of us should sit down together.
I agree.
And maybe even have the conversation. I mean, honestly, maybe even Senator Fontana, because he represents the whole area, would be a good person for that board because he would be, you know, willing to at least represent all of us and know that he'd be held accountable by our constituents. I'm just saying, suggesting somebody who knows development, somebody who knows our areas equally. Just, but a voice for our area definitely needs to be on there.
Thanks, Councilwoman. So we do have a motion to, to interview the candidate and we have a second concluded discussion, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions. I'll work with the clerk and councilwoman and councilmen to schedule that interview. And then last, no, that takes care of that. Now we go into unfinished business. And Madam Clerk, are you going to read unfinished business? How do you, how do you wish to approach that? Those are the appointments that we had interviewed last Wednesday.
Bill 1333. Resolution appointing Santiago Garcis as the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance. Bill 1334. Resolution appointing Alex Matthews to serve as a member of the Ethics Hearing Board for a term to expire January 31st, 2022. Bill Number 1335. Resolution appointing Cheryl Gani as a member of the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh with a term to expire December 31st, 2024. Bill Number 1336. Resolution appointing Alexander B. LaRocco as a member of the Housing Authority of the City with a term to expire December 31st, 2024.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. May I then have a motion to approve? We'll take discussion with the motion.
Motion to approve.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Second, we have discussion with Councilwoman Kail Smith.
I do want to thank Dan Gilman and Mayor Pudido for making sure that we have a voice on the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh. A lot of people know that our area has had a lot of issues with Housing Authority in our side of town, and mostly because things happened on our side of town. People went to jail for it, quite frankly. And so there's a lot of people that are questioning, you know, they question a lot of things that happened in terms of Housing Authority ever since that. And so I just want to thank, I want to thank Richard Butler for serving previously on the board. He was from Crafton Heights. And now we have Alex on there. And he just offers a wide range of voices because he has so much diversity. He's an immigrant, he's a veteran, he's from the LGBT community. And I just want to thank the mayor's office for making sure that they put somebody with a, from our side of town on there, but also somebody who can represent a lot of people equally, so.
Thanks, Councilwoman, thank you. Without further discussion then, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions. Those are unanimously approved. That takes us into reports of committee for final action. Our first committee of the morning is our Committee on Finance and Law. Our Chair is Councilman Burgess. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 1365. Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for February 6, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1287. Resolution providing for the issuing of a warrant in the total sum of $6,857.2 in favor of Diane and Ronald K. Baki, a warrant in the sum of $9,918.8 in favor of the City of Pittsburgh Treasurer, and a warrant in the total sum of $724.90 in favor of Jordan Tax Service as final settlement related to the action filed in the Common Pleas Court of Allegheny County. Bill Number 1288. Resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in the amount of $5,303.34 to Pepper Hamilton for professional consulting and legal services in relation to False Claims Act litigation. Bill Number 1289. Resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Gleason and Associates in an amount not to exceed $9,946 for professional services in connection with a lawsuit filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill Number 1290. Resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Kittleson LLC in an amount not to exceed $10,082.20 for professional services in connection with a lawsuit filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill Number 1305. Resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Tabitha Workmeister on her own behalf and as guardian on behalf of her minor children in an amount not to exceed $80,000 in settlement of litigation and as ordered by the court as described in the full and final general release and settlement agreement between the parties. Bill Number 1306. Resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Carol Katz in an amount not to exceed $3,200 for mediation services related to the parties in a federal litigation case.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills under our Finance and Law Committee. Do we have further discussion on any of the bills? Okay, seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. And all in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strausberger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills having received, then the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Our next committee is our Committee on Public Work Services. Our Chair is Councilwoman Teresa Kail Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Kail Smith presents Bill Number 1366. Report of the Committee on Public Works for February 6, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1332. Resolution providing for a contract or the use of existing contracts and/or agreements Bill number 1332, resolution providing for a contract or the use of existing contracts and/or agreements providing for the planning, design, repairs, maintenance, improvements, emergencies, operation, and other purchase of materials, equipment, and supplies in connection with the production of the Complete Street Design Guide Line and associated projects.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of this bill under our Public Work Services. We have ongoing discussion with Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Thank you. I just want to thank everyone for their work on this, but I want to make it very clear that, you know, the reason I was moving this forward under my committee is because I have confidence that the administration is going to go and involve the community in a lot of this process, that they're not going to go, as we have in the past, with a plan, a frequency plan, and telling folks what they need to have in their neighborhoods. But we're going to hear from the neighborhood groups. But for me, I want to make it very clear that some of these neighborhood groups need to be defined in very different ways. And I don't mean through the city's city planning process or the registered community groups, organizations, not that process. But for me, it's making sure that people are actually residents of the city of Pittsburgh. I've gone to meetings now where a lot of the people from outside the city of Pittsburgh are trying to determine what happens in our side of town. A lot of them are through Bike Pittsburgh organizations, a lot of them are through the healthy bike, healthy rides, through that effort. A lot of them are just through the city planning process. And for me, I don't want somebody from outside the city telling me what I need to have in the city. They won't, I don't have that same luxury of going to Green Tree, going to Craft. And we border so many boroughs in our district. We're not, our residents are not even able to speak at those meetings without permission ahead of time, pre-written. So, I just want to be, you know, our residents are not given that same consideration. And so, I don't want somebody coming in and having that kind of voice in our side of town, even though it affects them, but just as their areas affect us. We need to make sure who those groups are. And I think that I'm going to put a process in place to make sure that we get written and written information of the attendees and that we're getting addresses. And not that people can't attend, but you certainly shouldn't be having the voice over the residents of the neighborhood that actually, people that have actually resided in that neighborhood and have invested in those communities and neighborhoods. So, for me, it's, I want to make sure that process is clear. And I also want to make sure that there's a part where city council is involved in those meetings so we can assure that our residents are being heard and not just using a group to say, oh, this is what people want, and it's really what you wanted all along, that you're, you know, forming a group to say what you want to have happen. I've been through this routine so many times with Pittsburgh Public Schools when I worked there that I know the routine so well, you know, that you get people to say what you want them to say and you get the outcome you want, but you're not really hearing from the community. And I think people have had it with that thought. And that's why you see so many different people having opposition. That's why you see the socialist Democrat, you know, Democrats saying that they want a voice at the table because they really have never felt heard, because we do these kinds of games. So, I want to make sure, as we move forward, that there's real community input, very transparently.
Thanks, Councilwoman. Appreciate that. With no further discussion, then, the bill's now ready for final action. And all in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor. Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill having received, then, the legally required number of votes is finally passed. Our next committee is our Committee on Human Resources. Our chair is Councilwoman Darlene Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thanks, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Harris presents Bill number 1367, Report of the Committee on Human Resources for February 6th, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number 1329, resolution providing that the city enter into a professional services agreement and/or contracts with UPMC Mercy in connection with the administration and evaluation of medical examinations and related tests and procedures for the Civil Service Commission's Medical Examination Program for current and prospective employees for employment and promotion and providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $1,600,000. Bill number 1330, resolution amending Resolution number 363, which authorizes the city of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional service agreement with Aon Risk Services for the purpose of securing excess workers' compensation insurance coverage by increasing the cost by $24,000 for 120 additional days of service.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of these bills under our Committee on Human Resources. Do we have further discussion with Councilwoman Harris?
Yes. I am going to ask again at the suggestion of our Budget Director that we extend 1329 to the end of the year and do a rebid. There was only one company that bid, it was only up for two weeks. I've had four people ask me, they couldn't even get into where they had for jobs and that. There was some difficulty with that. But I think there are, you know, other companies out there that would like to bid. And I don't think that it was bid in a fair way. So, I am going to make that a motion. That we go to the end of the year and have it rebid.
Can I, just, can we do that legally? I mean, can we have something from the law department?
Can I do?
Well, Councilwoman, yep. Councilwoman Harris has the floor.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just want to know before I second it, that's all.
Yeah. And there is a point of order, and I'm going to give the floor to Councilman Burgess.
So, to do this, first of all, you have to break the rules of counsel because you can't make a verbal amendment. So, first, you have, because we have to have a written amendment at this table. So, the first thing is, you have to have a supermajority to break the rules of counsel, which, and then after that, you can make a motion to amend the bill.
Okay. I would ask if one of the clerks would put that down in writing.
First, I think we're going to go back to the councilman's order of things. We would need first a motion to, a supermajority to waive the rules of counsel for reconsideration. I won't support that.
Is that not extending a contract, because that contract negotiates? I'd want to be clear before I vote.
So, if I may, we don't have the power to do this. The legislation before us is about the contract in place. If there was a desire to see, and this came up for discussion last Wednesday as well, to see an extension take place as opposed to this rebid, then that would come as a separate piece of legislation for the consideration of the council.
Okay. I'll be honest, I totally agree with Councilwoman Harris. This, you know, I'm tired of these things coming to us at last minute. And, but at the same time, I want to make sure what we're doing is legal on the, you know...
So, at the discussion at the Wednesday table with the Director of Human Resources, this is the same company. UPMC had the contract the last time they bid. They did put the bid out, there was only one applicant, and it was only...
Because it went, the bid went out late.
BMC. I believe it met all conditions that need, I, at least according to the Director, it did. And for that, I'll take the Director's word.
I'm hearing different stories, I just want to be clear.
I'll make a motion that we recommit this bill.
We would need a second on the motion to recommit.
Put it back on the table to get it done right.
She can motion to recommit. I won't support, but she can motion to recommit if she gets a second. Okay? I don't have a second to recommit. So, the motion fails. So, we're back on the bill, 1329 as it exists. Councilwoman Strasburger.
I did not want to hold this one up because I don't want to hold up hiring processes, but I do also share the same concerns. I believe from the briefing that we heard after last Wednesday's meeting that this was not given due time for other bidders to bid on this RFP. And I think, what we, what I understand from that is that there's a process that's being put into place to allow for, you know, it's sort of more an automated reminder system to allow for this to not happen in the future. But it's my, it's my understanding that we just didn't give enough time for other potential vendors to bid on this RFP. And we need to, you know, we need to ensure that going forward that that changes. So, I don't want to hold this up because I don't think that there's a clear path forward as to how to, you know, to make this, to rectify this without hurting, you know, the timeline on this particular vendor, and it relates to hiring. But we need to, we need to fix the process and the system.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Is there anyone else for first round of discussion, Council?
I'm sorry, so this is for four years. So, I mean, I share Councilwoman Harris's concern. How many years, five years?
It's five.
So, it's five years. So, I can't support this because then it's, we're rewarding this failed system for five years. Four years. I thought it was four, it is four.
And may I, if we do support this?
Councilwoman...
So, I mean, for me, I'm either going to vote it down, or I think maybe recommitting, maybe the only idea is to sit down and work through the, with the administration. Because, I mean, it is concerning. You're giving a five-year contract for somebody with one bid. And there were times, I recall, us resubmitting contracts because, in the bid process, to go through the bid process to attract more bidders. And so, you know, we have done this before. And so, I don't, and not that I think that we should be controlling that part because, I mean, how many bidders are there going to be for this? And I mean, there's just not going to be that many, I don't think.
There's going to be one out there.
So, there's, yeah, but there's only two or three, right? I mean, we don't know.
We don't know.
According to the Director last week at the Wednesday discussion, there, the UPMC did hold the contract previously. Everyone was satisfied with the performance of the contract in meeting the needs of the medical evaluations for civil service and in our hiring practices for police and fire. And I would certainly not want to disrupt the testings that need to take place, especially at such a critical time when we are adding additional classes of, especially police and fire.
And that's fine, but at the same time, we want to make sure that this is being done in a very...
Sure, and I agree, Councilwoman.
Clear process, and I don't think that it's...
We all know the other bidder, and I would think they're quite competent in the work that they do and would fully understand this was out there, and if they had chosen to bid, they would have bid.
Well, I know, but I'm not, I'm not going to make that assumption. And so, because, and I don't want to make that assumption because we said, did the same thing about the bus shelters. I found out later that they had sent some letters. So, there were people that were interested. So, I'm just going to say that.
Okay, so, does anybody else wish to weigh in? I'm going to go back to Councilwoman Harris.
I just don't know what to do, to be honest with you. I'm struggling with this because, you know, I really like the Director, quite frankly, but I also don't want to see us doing something repeatedly. And we say this all the time, every time something comes up, we're going to change, you know, we're going to change the process. But we say it every time, and we don't change the process.
Okay, I'm going to go back to Councilwoman Harris.
And again, this has been at the suggestion of our Budget Director.
Yeah, but our Budget Director's not an attorney, someone make sure what we're doing is right legally.
Okay, what I'm asking for at this time is so that we can put this back on the table Wednesday and have all the information. If not, then I guess it doesn't matter if we do one bid or two bids in construction or any other area, that some people would like to make sure that there's bidding. It's just not right. The way it was done, it was only out there two weeks. I don't believe it was in the newspapers. I believe it was only online. I've had so far in the last, I'd say, two, three weeks, at least four people let me know that they couldn't find the site to be able to go in and bid on this. Not this in particular, but other things. So...
But this is the bill before us, Councilwoman.
Right. So, I'm just asking for a recommittal.
We entertained that motion, and it did not receive a second, Councilwoman.
Okay.
Okay, so...
Then, I'll be abstaining because I hope, I don't see anybody on this council ever complain that there's only one bid or somebody didn't get, you know, to bid. This could be extended. I don't know why we have a Budget Director if we don't listen to the Budget Director.
Councilman Burgess.
Bill Urbannick is my friend. We work together in terms of overseeing the budget. He was indispensable in terms of our budget negotiations. I have also respect for his associate, but he is not a member of council. And his advice is advisory. My job is to make the best decisions based on my constituency. And so, no staff person, no member of the clerk's staff, and in fact, not even, I mean, I'll listen to other members, but at the end of the day, I make my own decisions. And so, I love Bill, but I, this notion that we're going to elevate him to the 10th member of council, frankly, is a notion that I will not entertain. And whenever it comes up, I will say something publicly about it, right? If you want to be a member of council, run. Go through the difficulty of being elected, right? Go through the public meetings and go through all the difficulties we have to go through.
So, can I just say, before we start saying stuff about Bill Urbannick, we don't know what was exactly said.
Yeah. So, we're out in the weeds, and we're in a speculative conversation. So, we do have a bill in front of us now.
And nobody wants to hear Bill Urbannick.
We have entertained discussion, so the bills are now ready for final action. I ask all that are in favor of the passage of the bills to vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed to vote no. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on our Committee on Human Resources?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Abstain.
On both, or just 1329?
Oh, abstain on 329.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor. Mrs. Kail Smith.
No on Bill 329. 1329, is it 13?
Mm-hmm. 1329, that's it.
1329.
Councilwoman.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Aye on the other.
Mr. Kraus President. On Bills 1329, there's seven ayes, one no, one abstention. All other bills, eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills, then, having received the legally required number of votes, are finally passed. Our next committee is our Committee on Land Use and Economic Development. Our chair is Councilwoman Gross. Councilwoman, we have a requirement to recommit 1353 because it needs to have been held for a public hearing.
I see that.
Would you wish to take that separately, or would you like all the bills to be read together?
I was just going to ask the clerk if you wanted it handed or not. Okay, well, we're separately, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill number 1368, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for February 6th, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number 1323, resolution amending Resolution 744, providing for an agreement with various community organizations for operational administrative expenses so as to transfer funds within the job numbers shall now read, Trinity Temple Church, Homewood Concerned Citizens Council to Operation Better Block, Homewood Development Collaborative, and Veterans Art, plus Housing Collaborative, to Project Love Coalition, and Catholic Charity Rosalia Center to Catholic Charity. Bill number 1324, resolution amending Resolution 747, so as to read Washington Heights Ecumenical Food Bank to St. Mary of the Mount Church, Washington Heights Ecumenical Food Bank. Bill number 1325, resolution amending Resolution 746, so as to now read Veterans Arts, plus the Housing Collaborative, to Project Love Coalition, and Catholic Charities Rosalia Center to Catholic Charities, and a name change within City Council, Washington Heights Ecumenical Food Bank to St. Mary of the Mount Church, Washington Heights Ecumenical Food Bank. Bill number 1326, ordinance accepting a new name change, Legacy Way, in the 22nd Ward of the city as per recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. Bill number 1327, resolution accepting a new street name, Carlo Drive, in the 4th Ward of the city as recommended by CPAC. Bill number 1328, resolution accepting a new street name, Ursuline Drive, in the 8th Ward of the city as per recommendation by CPAC.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills under our Committee on Land Use and Economic Development. Do we have further discussion on these bills? Okay, seeing none, these bills are now ready for final action. And all in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on these bills?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris. Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus President.
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills, having received the legally required number of votes, are finally passed. Now to take under consideration Bill 1353 under Land Use and Economic Development.
Sorry, Mr. President, thank you.
Thanks, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross also presents Bill Number 1353, Ordinance Amending and Supplement of the Pittsburgh Code by creating Title 13 entitled Storm Water Management and by deleting Storm Water Management text from Title 10, Building Chapter 1003.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Yes, Mr. President, last week while I was doing reporting work that could not be rescheduled with the Gender Equity Commission, I apologize for missing this meeting, and I've been informed since by the Planning Department that we do need to have an additional public hearing on the ordinance change. So at this point, I'm just motioning to recommit, so it'll appear on the Standing Committee meeting in a second.
Thank you, Councilwoman. So we have a motion to recommit, and we have a second. Do we have discussion on the motion to recommit? We have none, seeing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions, thank you, Councilwoman. 1353 is recommitted, it will appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda, and we'll take the appropriate action then. Our final committee of the morning is our Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs. Our chair is Councilman O'Connor. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 1369, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for February 6, 2019, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1311, Resolution Adopting the Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the Pittsburgh Produce Terminal Redevelopment Project. The existing building will be converted from produce warehouse office space into a combination retail restaurant entertainment and office center. The parking lot to the rear will be updated to current standards. The site is located on the north side of Smallman Street between 16th and 21st and the 2nd Ward. Bill Number 1331, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 191, Providing for the Execution of a Corporation Agreement with the URA for the Administration of Certain Projects and Programs and Providing for the Payment of Costs Thereof Not to Exceed $3,286,320 by Including an Additional Economic Development Housing Initiative, Line Item For an Amount Not to Exceed $54,000 and the Total Cost Thereof by the Same Amount Not to Exceed $3,340,320. Council District all.
I'm sorry, thank you, Councilwoman, or Madam Clerk. You have heard the reading and the title of the bills under our Land Use and Economic Development Committee. We have further discussion with the Councilwoman Gross.
Don't worry. I just want to say for the record that everyone knows I've had lengthy problems with this project, some of which have been addressed, and certainly a lot of constituent concern over the project, but the sewer is not one of them. This was a complicated and long overdue sewer remediation, both in terms of the public sewer and the sewer on the site, and so I'm supportive today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, without further discussion on the bills, these bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called, those opposed will vote no. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills, then, having received the legally required number of votes, are finally passed. That takes us into motions and resolutions. I do have some brief meeting announcements. This afternoon, council will be hosting a cablecast, cablecast post-agenda discussion hosted by Councilwoman Harris. It is scheduled for this afternoon at 1:30. It is in council chambers. It relates to Bills 2019, 1218, 1219, and 1220. Then also tomorrow morning, Wednesday, February 13, at 10:00 a.m., council will hold our Standing Committee meeting here in council chambers. Then tomorrow, February 13, at 1:30 p.m., we will be hosting a cablecast public hearing as it relates to Bills 1212 and 1213, as they relate to the historic designations of the Avrins House and the Westing House Memorial. With that, Councilman O'Connor, I think you wish to call for post-agenda.
Yes, I do, thank you. Myself and Councilwoman Strasburger wrote a meeting on Friday, or Thursday, or Friday of last week, and a couple of years ago, I held a post-agenda on air quality. And we're seeing more and more issues, and especially in our part of town and I'm sure across the city. So I would like to call for a post-agenda on air quality, and I believe Councilwoman Strasburger is going to call for a public hearing at some point, or call for it today, but we'll schedule it at some point in a neutral location so that people from all across the city can possibly attend. So I am making a, I'm calling for a post-agenda on air quality, Comcast post-agenda. Oh, no, I keep saying Comcast.
Cablecast. Cablecast post-agenda.
I have Verizon, too. I don't know why I keep supporting them.
And we have a second, and discussion, seeing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay, we will work with the clerk's office and your office to schedule that, and then, Councilwoman, do you wish?
So I'm not going to call for anything today in particular, but just to add on to that, I appreciate Councilman O'Connor calling for that, and I'll be there with bells on. Air quality is an issue that's impacted the city of Pittsburgh for a long, long time. I have been hearing about it since I started with the city and have been noticing it since I lived in the city, and, you know, I don't know whether it's just East End neighborhoods that smell the sulfur smell, or whether it's, you know, East End plus other neighborhoods across the city, but clearly, it's reached a tipping point with the events at Clerton Coke Works in December and the sort of lack of notification to local communities right there about the fire until several weeks afterwards. And there was a policy committee hearing held by the state electives just last week on this particular issue, and that was, anyone could have attended that, but it was held in Clerton, and it was very informative. I wasn't able to attend, it was the middle of the day, but I did read about it in the paper and heard accounts from it, and I think that the residents of the city of Pittsburgh deserve the same opportunities to get answers, to ask questions. So a post-agenda is something I'm fully supportive of because we need answers as council members, and that will be open to the public, but I also want the opportunity for residents to be able to share their experiences and their stories and their concerns, which has not taken place yet. So that's why I don't know exactly what I envision for the location, but certainly evening, when more affected residents can attend, and be happy to work with other council members on finding a location and sort of the right format for this, so that it's informative and also an opportunity for people to have their voices heard.
Thanks, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Smith.
I just want to thank you both for calling for this post-agenda, and I look forward to the discussion. I think that a lot of people don't realize, when you mentioned East End, I think, you know, a lot of people across the city think of it as an East End issue and not really an issue for the entire region. And, I mean, you look at the amount of children nowadays suffering from asthma, and that we are an aging city. We have a lot of elderly people, and those are some of the people that are most vulnerable when air quality is not just, you know, as it should be, and so, it's just not healthy. And so, and it's also a cost to taxpayers because children with asthma get transportation, they get busing to their door. And so, you know, I think that the cost to people, not only in terms of health, but also if you can, if you can put some interest in it, because you can think of the dollar amount, and the, and the amount of the tree canopy that we're losing across the city also affects our landslides and some other things. So there's just so many things that this involves and includes, and I think that just having that conversation and making people understand, and people who don't understand and people who do understand who just don't care, may just still hear something or learn something throughout this. So I want to thank you for, both for calling for this, because it's actually important to our area as well. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Councilwoman Harris.
Yes, I know you said, what bills were for this afternoon, but this is on the three pieces on the gun legislation.
That's correct. Okay, with that, may I have a motion to?
Yes, I want to make sure that I registered, I vote for the Will of Council that occurred earlier, and I think, I say yes to be a cosponsor, I'm not sure if I am, but I want to make sure that I am.
I think, technically, I think everybody's on now.
And I wanted to make sure that I stand with Councilman O'Connor and all these other council people on that Will of Council.
Great.
I register, I vote.
Yes, all members are on.
Yeah, all members are on.
So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve our minutes adjourned or meetings, and we'll see you back here for the post-agenda.
No move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Word, Jim.